There you go.
Oh.
I almost, I finally got to do a nice loud one. And we've got Lee online, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I thought you were there. I just can't see you. I can hear you. Thank you. Thank you. Now I can hear you. Good morning, everybody. Calling our Tuesday, June 18th Board of Commissioners, County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, let the record reflect, all members are present with Commissioner Lenzmeyer participating remotely, as was noticed. Please join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Members, our first item is approving the agenda. Dr. Williams, do we have any modifications this morning?
Do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, members, unless there is a change that you're requesting, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Consent agenda. I'm aware of one item to be pulled for just a brief discussion purposes. Commissioner Bertram, do you want to say which one you're looking for?
Yes, Madam Chair. I notified you and Mike yesterday. I think we should have a little bit of a conversation on E16, the extension agreement.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and I'll see if anything else to be pulled. And then is your preference, go ahead and just make the comment about that and then we can?
Why don't?
Okay. Is there any other items that members would want, wish to pull? Okay, before we get to that, then, I just want to make sure that the public is aware that when you see these long items, know that we read them all, that we ask questions where it is pertinent and we're given some very good information, which you should be able to see in the packet. And there are times like the one you want to pull that it just deserves another comment about it. So Commissioner Bertram, do you want to ask your question or make your comment? And then I'll look for a motion on this.
Sure. And I don't know if Mike wants to say something, but the reason I thought it would be appropriate to pull it is I'm not opposed to it, but it's the approval of the 2025-2027 memorandum of agreement between Stearns County and University of Minnesota for the extension programs that we offer in the county. Steve and I are on the Extension Committee. We went through that discussion there at EMC Regional Meeting. They went through it. But the general public sometimes doesn't understand that services like the extension, there is a cost to it. And so it's a related cost. It's a benefit service to the community. And then this year, which I didn't know until this year, is that EMC negotiates a contract with the university, the Association of Minnesota Counties, for the entire state. And it's the same across the state. And if I remember right, what was it, 18% increase on that contracted services? So just this one item on a budget that we really have limited control over. And I'm not saying that's, it's a bad program, but it's an 18% increase. So when we look to do our budgets, obviously, this will impact that. So I just thought it was worth letting the public know that the extension services are a service that we cooperate with, that do cost us money to provide to the county. And I don't know if Mike has anything else that he wants to add to that or?
Yes, and I apologize because I didn't technically pull it. Pull it. I just asked you for your comments. Do you want to finish up our conversation and then we can move to do the adoption?
I'm sorry.
And I think Commissioner Notch has something too. Do you want to go and then have Dr. Williams?
Sure. You know, and part of the reason for that increase, they did a market study on the wage structure. And, you know, as Jeff and I are very aware, they're down with two positions right now. And what they're finding out is, a lot of times, the private sector will pay more than the university will, even though the university's benefits are better than the private sector. But, you know, when it comes to dollars in your hand, you know, the private sector offers more. So in order to hopefully prevent in the future, a lot of, you know, attrition, you know, after you spend time hiring somebody and a year later, they move on, hopefully by bringing wages in line, we can keep some of these educators for a longer period of time.
Dr. Williams?
I don't know that there's much to add to that. This is a multi-year agreement. It does increase even more in year two and year three by about nine or $10,000 as well.
Yeah, 3% a year for the next two years.
Okay. So recruitment and retention issues, sound like they're at the fore. Commissioner Bertram, thank you for, I think it's important that we're letting the public know. So my question is, is that enough discussion? And do you all want to move the whole consent agenda? Or do you want to vote on this?
So moved.
Okay, so, or thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bertram.
I'll second with a comment.
Okay, there's a second. Go ahead.
We had a lot of consent items. But, you know, it's kind of interesting. There's some interesting ones, you know, that maybe the public, you know, doesn't take the time to go through. But I just thought the interesting one was the farming township naming this. There's a lake that's 23 acres with no name. And there's a petition to actually name that lake, you know, which stuff like that is kind of unique, I guess.
Do you want to say what the name is for the public?
Is that Sunrise?
Yeah, Sunrise, yeah.
Sunrise Lake?
Yep.
Well, that's the proposed name that they want to give it. So that was kind of an interesting one on there.
So it's going to be a public hearing in August, so we'll.
Yes.
There are a lot more voted on.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And it was good to see.
Madam Chair.
On the farm.
Just for clarification, Randy, and then is it by, does it even require the legislature to approve those at the end?
No, you are the approval on that.
Oh, you, okay.
And we are, the DNR has been notified and we've been talking to them, and they will probably be present at the public hearing too. And they've been fine with that too.
Okay.
Well, good. Well, thank you.
Madam Chair, do we have any other unnamed lakes?
Probably.
Yeah, we were talking about Commissioner Bertram when this came up. That was like, oh, we have an unnamed lake. So then it made us think there must be another unnamed lake.
And with the weather, we maybe have more.
That is true, including very.
I saw someone that we had this morning.
In the middle of some fields that were planted. All right. Seeing no further discussion on the consent agenda. And yes, for the public, there are a number of very interesting things in here, along with the probably more mundane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Opposed, same sign. Okay. The seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Our next item is presentation by Mr. Schreifels and probably, I'm guessing, others.
So this is on the aggregate removal or the gravel tax ordinance. There's been some statutory changes. And Sarah Uch from the Auditor's Office is going to go through a short presentation.
You're probably going to have to, like, get closer. I'm going to get a message from Janet.
And then after she does that, this is a public hearing, so you have to open.
Okay, great. Welcome. Just to make sure you say your name for the record.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Sarah Uch, Finance Director in the Auditor Treasurers Office. This morning, we're requesting a public hearing. But before that, I just have, I think, four or five quick slides to kind of give some parameters around what we're discussing today. The aggregate tax ordinance has a bit of a timeline. And I'll talk about the ordinance as well. But the county did adopt an ordinance in 1983, and it's ordinance number 98. And since then, there has been some changes in statute, the most recent one in 2020 that we're aware of. And the one in 2020 did change some of the allocation of the tax dollars by statute. And so we are just looking today to update that ordinance to be in alignment with the statute. Please note, Stearns County is following statute. It's just that our ordinance has been outdated and needs some, needs some wording changes. So the purpose of the aggregate tax removal ordinance is an option that the counties have to impose this production tax anytime that aggregate is removed from the pits and quarries located within Stearns County. So the purpose of the ordinance is really to provide the county with some additional funds to their road and bridge, as well as to the townships and cities that lie within there, so that it helps with the repair of the roads that are being damaged by the hauling of this, of this material. So the tax is imposed to every hauler. And as you see in the ordinance, it's at the, at the earlier of when it is crushed or when it is hauled, I believe. And so it's a self-reported tax, self-reported amount that we then tax those individuals on. And the tax comes out in this way, 5% for administration of the program, 42 and 1/2% each to our county road and bridge fund, which brings in between 200 and 250,000 a year for our road and bridge fund. And the same amount goes to the city or township in which that pit is located for the same purpose, for their road maintenance. And then there's 15% that goes into a special reserve fund that the county holds here. And that purpose of that is meant for the restoration of any abandoned pits, quarries within the county. And if there aren't any, then the statute allows us to use it for other unmet reclamation needs or conservation or environmental needs. I mentioned this already, the aggregate haulers do, do a self-report, they self-report to the county each quarter. And their reports are due, I believe, the 20th day after the end of the quarter. And there are some statutory penalties within there if they fail to do so. So now, as far as the ordinance changes proposed, I believe it was on your packet page 179, that kind of tried to do a side-by-side comparison. And you'll see, we just had some definition changes. There was updated in the distribution of the revenues, which I just went over, and a little bit of added language that came again from the statute. So today, we are simply asking for the board to open in public hearing and take any public testimony. We did not have any testimony by email or phone that I'm aware of. Then we are looking for the board to take action to update the county's ordinance and adopt those changes. Then we will post it on the website and notify by mail all those that we are required to do so. And a special note here, any future use of that special reserve fund within the ordinance, we have said we'll come back before the county board for approval prior to use.
And before we open it, could you just tell us, and there might be other questions, how long has the current tax been in place?
Well, 1983 is the year that we imposed the ordinance. So that's.
So there has not been a change since then. I mean, that's, that's the thing that I think for the public, they just need to know.
Right, absolutely.
Or reinforce. Commissioner Notch?
And then Sarah, could you maybe just state how much the tax per yard of material is?
Yeah, I think it's 21 and 1/2 cents.
Just so it's kind of on the record too.
Yep, absolutely.
Yes.
21.5 cents per cubic yard or 15 cents per ton of aggregate material excavated.
So while it's always a challenge to update an amount, it's been 40 years. Okay, all right. Anything else before we go to the public hearing? Yes, Commissioner Bertram?
Coincidentally, Madam Chair, I asked Vicky Dullinger from your office questions about this in April, because I was just curious. And the one thing I'm still not clear on is, does the state pay the tax? So the way, the way Vicky explained it, and by the way, she did a good job, I think I thanked her, but in case I didn't, please do, she said the operator, and that was the, you said the hauler. And I was confused between the hauler and the operator. And then at one point, it says the owner of the pit, because obviously, most of these pits are privately owned.
Yep.
And then the operator would be any one of the construction company, road construction companies. And then the hauler, of course, could be somebody else. So just clarify that for me.
That is very confusing. And it's one that becomes confusion internally for us as well as we reviewed this. In the ordinance, we talk about the definition of the operator. And we talk about the operator being the one who's in the business of removing the material. So I was using hauler and operator interchangeably when I was presenting just now. But we do talk to the owner of the pit as well.
And Commissioner Bertram, I agree. It's very confusing.
Right. And I, I mean, some of this, obviously, it's working. But on the same token, I would assume that it's another question. Someone kind of spot checks this, doesn't it? Because it's a little discretionary, I would think, from potentially operator, operator, or whatever, who's reporting what. And there is some kind of a spot check once in a while, isn't there?
Yeah, I mean, we work with the townships a lot on this, right? And they're the ones that actually catch if they're not reporting, right? So we're working with the townships and then the haulers. And Vicky does a good job of that, right? So some of it does get a little confusing. Most time, it's pretty straightforward. But depending on the job, it can get a little bit dicey.
I know, Madam Chair, that there's, you know, many times, most times, there are skills, because, you know, the, the contractor that's removing it has to track it for the owner. And so there's some of that going on already. But it would be an easy spot check, I would think, to what the owner's getting paid, the landowner getting paid from the operator, that would be a spot check of, are they, are they reporting accurately?
Right. And then we've talked about doing an audit of this too, to hire an outside person to come in and audit some of those records. And we have the authority to do that. So that's something we're looking at.
I don't, Madam Chair, I don't think that would hurt just to keep everybody above board. And obviously, the owner of the pit will be the best monitor of whether or not that's being calculated, because they would know, wait a minute, that, that doesn't sound right or something. However, it wouldn't hurt to cross-check what the owner is getting paid to what they're reporting.
Yep.
You know, and then, Madam Chair, how much?
Hold on real quick, just for the public. We are going to hold our public hearing. Normally, we do many of these questions afterwards, but because they're all pertinent to helping people understand before we open it, let's go a few more minutes. And before you go to another question, and I know both Commissioner Notch and Commissioner Persky have questions. Brenda, do you have anything to add? Because clearly, part of what you try to do is make sure that things are as clear, definitions and languages as clear as possible. So is there anything else that we or the public need to know?
I don't believe so. I think the statute pretty much covers everything. And it was written based on what the statute says. So the ordinance follows the statute.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bertram?
Madam Chair, and the reason, you're right, normally, we do it that way.
These are all appropriate.
The public won't understand.
What we're talking.
If we don't understand it before we open it up to the public hearing.
We're good.
They won't understand it. So the, so the state would be potentially, there are state-owned pits. And then there's private pits that the state will go into and haul out. So the state does pay the tax, is really what I'm not clear on yet.
I don't believe the state.
Mr. Schreifels?
No.
Are they exempt by that?
Yes, they are.
That's interesting.
So the county, just so you understand, the county does somewhat pay indirectly. So we hire gravel crushers to come into pits and crush gravel. And at the time, we do a crush gravel crushing contract, we charge the sales, or the sales tax, the aggregate tax at that time. And so when we have a county road project and we're having someone crush the gravel and haul it, we have that, the crusher pay that. And then even if we do the hauling. So in essence, it is getting paid on that material when the county is involved in a county road project.
So the county pays its own tax?
Right.
In, yeah.
But the state does not, which I think is interesting.
Yep.
And then the reserve, what I'd like to know is how much money is in the reserve, that 15%, since 1983, what does that generate?
990,000 is what we have in there today.
And then, Madam Chair, I wouldn't mind seeing just a spreadsheet for whatever period of time, what the township, what all the, you know, there isn't a sand pit in every township.
We have those.
What the revenue is going to which townships you must have.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't mind seeing that just out of curiosity. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Notch and then Commissioner Persky.
Well, I was just going to mention what Sarah mentioned, that usually whoever comes in to crush the material, they know how many yards they're crushing. So the owner knows how many yards are on the pile, I guess you could say.
Definitely a bit of trust.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I was just going to comment too, just with, with all the projects we have, whether it be townships, city, county, even state projects, you know, they're paying for that gravel. And so they're getting a bill for that gravel. So we should have an idea about how much gravel is being used in the county. And then what our tax should be on that. So we should be able to chase that down.
Yep.
Mr. Schreifels?
The, the largest payer of this is Meridian and Way Park. So they're the big, the big ones. So you take that away, the numbers start getting a lot smaller.
Right, makes sense. Okay, with that, unless there's anything else, and I think this, for the public was helpful. So we're going to open up the public hearing, open up the public hearing on the adoption of the amendments to ordinance 98 regarding the aggregate removal tax in Stearns County. Is there anyone wishing to speak? You are welcome to do so for two or three minutes. Is anyone wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none and knowing?
No responses either.
Right, you said that. Want to make sure we're having that in there. All right, I'll close it. Okay, members, we've been asked to adopt this. Additional questions, thoughts moving forward?
Madam Chair, I'll move adoption of the ordinance change.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Notch.
I'll second that, Madam.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram.
Just one last comment, Madam Chair. Obviously, sand pits, having been on the planning commission, if you want to site a sand pit from Rockville to St. Cloud, you get 500 people in a planning commission meeting. If it's out by Belgrade, nobody cares. And I always smile at that, because of course, we can't haul the sand from Belgrade to Way Park. You know, nobody wants a sand pit. Nobody wants a solar farm. Nobody wants, you know, they want that all out in rural Stearns County. Well, that's fine. But there's a cost to this. And if you drive on 23, I don't have to tell you that, between Richmond and Rocksville, there's three major sand pits right along the road. Well, those, they do have impact on the community. It's great that they're there. But they do have major impact on that community for farmable land and, you know, eyesore and, you know, all the things that the metro folks don't want, we get to see every day. So I mean, just remember, it is an important commodity, gravel. We need gravel. If you want sidewalks and roads, we need gravel.
And absolutely, there are different pressure points, depending upon which community something is near and how the operation is done and people building trust about what the hours, among other things, are. But it is critical. Okay, members, it looks like we're ready to vote. All in favor of adopting the ordinance number 98 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. All opposed, same sign. The, the motion is adopted. Thank you for the work on this. It's important. We're going to move to our next item, which is another public hearing. Going to turn it over to Dr. Williams. We'll be holding a public hearing regarding the cannabis moratorium ordinance, our, our next stage in the, what appears to be ongoing work. This will not be the last time that we are seeing something.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. There's two items under the administration portion of the agenda. And as you said, the first one is to consider a cannabis moratorium ordinance. And there's a number of reasons why, why we're bringing this. And we talked about that at our last meeting a little bit. The second item will be to talk about the formation of the sales tax question, referendum question. But so for the first item, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hamis and others.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Steve Hamis. I'm the Assistant Minister for the County. With me is Brenda Theis from the County Attorney's Office and Angie Berg from Environmental Services. We're here to hold a public hearing today on the cannabis moratorium ordinance. There was no feedback from the public from email or any other source. So there is no input to add that way. Again, the ordinance for today is to put a moratorium in place on the establishment of cannabis businesses in the areas of the county that the county has zoning authority over. So all the unincorporated townships. Since we had the discussion at the last meeting, there's really no other presentation today. So again, you can open the public hearing.
And my understanding, one, one clarification was that if one of the townships wants to, or a city, small city, small city wants to adopt ours, they are able to?
Yes, we are sharing the, the ordinance with other jurisdictions. And any other city that wants to adopt this ordinance can certainly do so.
Okay.
And just one, one last addition to that. The, the moratorium can only go until January 1st, 2025 by statute. So that's what, what we've said within, within this ordinance. And you know, but we will be bringing other proposed ordinances back to you, so we can get those in place before the end of the year.
Sounds great. Okay. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the proposed cannabis moratorium? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the cannabis moratorium? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the proposed cannabis moratorium? Seeing none, and with no comments that were previously submitted, I will close this public hearing. hearing. Members?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we enact a moratorium on this issue.
There's been a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Bertram. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Commissioner Bertram, discussion.
Madam Chair, as I shared last meeting, I'm very concerned that the townships, all the townships and cities, especially the smaller ones, understand how important it is to piggyback this. And at the regional meeting, those of us that were there heard AMC saying, work closely with your local units of government to make sure they're doing the same thing. So I'll repeat what I said last meeting. I don't know how we do that exactly, but I think we really need to empower and reach out to those cities and townships and say, whatever AMC is saying, that it's important that you understand what we're doing, because we've seen this before. When other, when local units of government do some kind of a moratorium or something, it pops out in other areas. And I understand we have a county one, but just to be clean, and AMC verified that, let's do it together, everyone, or else there could be issues. So I think it's important that we get the word out that we've done this today, and that we will be working, and I know they should all know that, but we all know that they don't. And so I, what would be the plan of reaching them?
And those are always good questions, particularly for the cities, for whom we don't have jurisdiction, they need to make their own determinations. So to your point, what kind of outreach is going to be done, or already has been done for the public? And it's good for us to know. I mean, we all care about this. Ms. Berg, did you want to address that?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So I sent you a link a couple of weeks ago. We created a cannabis website, and anyone who's subscribed to that subscription through meetings on demand will get updates every time we do something. So after today, we'll send an update to, we automatically signed up cities and townships, they didn't have to sign themselves up. So they'll receive notice that a moratorium was adopted today, if that's the decision of the board, and to reach out to us if they have questions.
So it sounds like, in addition, so they're specifically already signed up, so they will get those information. And is that broad? Is it all members of their boards, or who is that, who did you sign up?
Yes, Madam Chair, we signed anyone up who had an email address registered with us.
Right, you need to have that.
Correct.
And then, in addition, anybody who get, who's signed up for our county all newsletters, or signs up specifically for this one, will get that.
Sure, we could also make sure that's happening.
That would be great. Commissioner Persky, it looked like you had a question.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, Madam Chair. Randy and Angie maybe can help us with the, first of all, have we gotten much inquiries from the townships? Have we gotten much?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky.
Ms. Berg.
The only one that we've heard from was Wakefield, and I think they contacted Dr. Williams months ago. They've adopted their own moratorium, just because there was rumblings about a growing facility maybe starting there a while back. Otherwise, it's been pretty silent on the issue.
Okay. Dr. Williams?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, no, go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say, I just was notified this morning that the Township Association is having a, what they're calling a town meeting on Thursday night. I forwarded that to the board members. I don't know if you would receive those or not. The reason I'm bringing it up is they have a number of questions on that agenda about cannabis, so that'll be a first chance here to reach out in person with them on Thursday night.
Good venue.
I won't be able to be there, and I didn't know about it until this morning, but hopefully-
Will we have staff there, Dr. Williams?
Like I said, I just learned about it when I-
Okay, if we're able to, that would be helpful.
I think, Madam Chair, obviously, we'll all, in our own way, you know, I'll put it in the column, sure, Steve will, and, you know, outreach or whatever, but again, God bless Angie, does the newsletter, the townships, and we do these outreach, and every time, you have people, it reminds me of my wife's, the church administrator, and it was in the bulletin, they go, oh, we don't read the bulletin, or we don't get it, or, you know, so the information's out there. But I think in this case, it behooves us as a county to be extra diligent in getting that, and so maybe a direct letter. And of course, the other thing that happens, and Angie's heard this as much as I have, is, well, the clerk got it, and I never got that.
That's why I was asking who all it was going to, so to the extent it could go to everybody. And at some point, we can't make them read things. So yes, if we all are doing that, I know Commissioner Persky wasn't quite done.
Yeah, just a couple of things. We had talked about this at the district meeting, and from my understanding, then, is that the townships then can adopt our policy, or can adopt or buy into our ordinance, or have our control. And with that, they can decide not to have a dispensary, is that correct?
Mr. Hammons?
There was several permutations in there, so I'm going to try to split it all apart. Yes, any city township can take our ordinance that you're deciding today and adopt that as their own. They can, if they choose, they can say, we're going to piggyback on the county's ordinance to do the moratorium. They could choose to create something on their own, they could choose not to do anything. Those are all certainly, you know, avenues that any jurisdiction can so choose to do. And I'm trying to speak only to the moratorium piece, because that's the issue in front of the board today. As Dr. Williams indicated, county staff are working on ordinances to talk about zoning, growing, selling, and all those other pieces that will be coming to the board in the next few months. For those ordinances, again, townships or cities can, especially, cities are going to have to come up with their own ordinances. Townships can also choose to adopt the county's ordinances that we adopt for those purposes.
Okay.
Hopefully, I think I threaded the needle on all your questions.
There's just one caveat, that's in the statute, as far as, you know, having dispensaries for every 12 and a half thousand people. And so if we don't reach that minimum, then would those townships be forced to, if they have an individual would come to them and say, we want to have a dispensary, because we've not met that minimum?
Mr. Hammons?
I don't know that, I don't know that the state agencies come up with a good answer to that question yet. I know that they're formulating rules now, and we as staff have been talking about that, too, and that's a scenario that we've kind of played with a couple of times, and I don't have a good answer for you at this time.
Okay.
It's a very good question.
And I just want to make sure we're communicating with the townships and giving them the authority that they need.
Yep.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, on that same topic, the Office of Cannabis Management will be holding a local government forum for people like us to attend and ask all those questions. They're figuring things out as we speak, so.
And if you can make sure we know about that when it's happening, that would be helpful. Great. Commissioner Notch, did you have anything?
Uh, no.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, members.
Just one last thing, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I really think, again, I'm going to be encouraging all local units to do a moratorium like ours, because I think unlike any other issue that we do, this would affect the county if a local unit of government doesn't do something, because this is the Wild West right now. And if we, I'm going to be encouraging the folks in my district to impose the moratorium like we did, and then allow time for us to get those questions in, and then they can decide how and what they want to do. But for now, I'm going to strongly encourage them that they do the moratorium, and I think we need to get the word out that that is an option, the three options you laid out. And then if they choose not to do anything, we still probably will have to end up dealing with it, because if it happens in the smallest of townships, we're still going to be affected by it, because it's within the county.
Yep.
If it becomes unleashed, so.
Agreed.
Okay.
And whatever we're able to put that's as clear as not mud on the website for people will be helpful, because what was going through my head again, as we were talking, is we also don't want to confuse townships with what else they have to do when we take this action. It's if they want to do something different, as opposed to the communities, which better figure out what they want to do and agree with you. We're going to have a really good ordinance in place, they may want to adopt themselves. So let's just make sure we've got good, as clear as we can, knowing everything is subject to change.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just one last thing, to get at Commissioner Bertram's comment of contacting your townships and cities. This ordinance will cover townships, it will cover the unincorporated areas.
That's what my point was, is that this will cover townships, they don't have to do anything.
Correct, they don't have to do anything. Now, let's say a township came to the county and said, we don't want a moratorium, what we've talked about on our side is then we would come to the board, and we would ask for an exception.
Right, we'd have to, we'd have to vote to change that.
Correct. So I don't anticipate that, but we do have a plan if that would happen.
So they're covered.
Correct.
The cities are not.
Right.
But the AMC did strongly suggest that everybody enact a moratorium, unless I missed that, anyway. I agree with you, but for whatever reason, AMC, which I agree with 100%, just to make it crystal clear, that there is a moratorium in place. In those local units.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it never hurts, and I don't think that if a township adopts our moratorium, it doesn't-
Right.
-hurt anything, but as Angie said, you know-
They do not have to.
Based on the legal advice that we've got, and the position of what we've got from the state, at this point, our moratorium will cover all the townships.
Right.
Cities, yes, cities will need to do something. And so reaching out to cities and letting them know that makes perfect sense. And letting townships know that-
Right.
-they can certainly adopt their own moratorium on top, and make sure that they're double-covered is certainly a good advice.
And as members know, I wasn't at the meeting, because I was in New York visiting family, which was fabulous. In general, when AMC is talking about this, it is about the small cities and incorporated areas, because we have jurisdiction over the township. So, you know, when we talk about some other public health, including related to this, we have some broader public health authority that extends past the unincorporated areas, but with this one, it is pretty specific that it would be the unincorporated area. So it can be a little confusing even to us about which items they might be encouraging, but they do not legally need to. And we just, we don't want to make them go through more work if they don't need to. That doesn't mean that they can't go ahead and adopt this. All right, you ready for a vote? All right, members, we have had a motion and a second on adopting the cannabis moratorium, this next part of our ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Opposed, same sign. All right, there is, it is unanimous, we have adopted this. Thank you for all the work. We will continue to have questions, so everything you keep hearing, help us, help us be able to do a better job of helping with that outreach as well. I think, Jeff, we all agree, we've got to keep finding more and more ways, you know, at some point, if somebody's been told something at least seven times and chooses not to do it, that's one thing, but let's make sure we're being very obvious in our outreach. So thank you. All right, so we are done with our public hearings for today. Let's move on to Dr. Williams, to the Justice Center, discussion of next steps and consideration of the sales tax referendum question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, we were going to do a few things under this agenda item. The first was to talk about entering into schematic design, but you already did that on Friday, so we don't need to entertain that decision today. The other couple of things that we wanted to do was a bit of a reminder of how we're going to finance the project, so a reminder about how the sales tax is going to work, and then want to generate a discussion about how we formulate that referendum question. I don't think you need to do that today, but we wanted to get a little discussion, and maybe some idea of how you want to frame that, and then we can bring it back to the board at a later meeting for approval. That's at least how we thought of it. You could take action to, if you wanted to. So to lead that, I'm going to turn to Randy and Sarah to show you the presentation on the sales tax timeline and the ballot question. Thank you.
Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Schifels.
Thank you. So, as Mike said, we're going to cover a few different things here, but we'll probably go a little quicker through some of the non-sales tax question content, though. If you want to have more discussion on those items, we certainly can, but we really need to focus on the question today. And we don't have to take action today, but we do need to know your thoughts, so when we bring it back, we can do a final thing.
So just to reiterate, you want us to focus specifically on this, recognizing there's a host of other-
Right.
-pieces in play, so we'll try to do that.
Yeah.
We know that that can be hard for us sometimes.
Yeah, we have a hard-
We will try to do that.
We have a deadline, and we need to get this-
Absolutely, go ahead. Proceed.
I'll turn it over to Sarah for the timeline.
All right, so a reminder, a reminder to yourself and the public, there's a little bit of a timeline here when it comes to the sales tax referendum. We're currently in the public education phase, making sure we get out in front of the public and let them know what they'll be seeing on their ballot. At the end of July here, we need to have a ballot question drafted and ready to send to the county auditor for the printing of ballots that will occur. November 5th will be the date of vote, and then between November and December, the county board will need to pass an ordinance, if it were to pass, and notify Department of Revenue and Secretary of State of this imposition. And then the earliest that the county can start collecting the sales tax would be April 1st, 2025. This is a public piece you've seen several times, but as a reminder to the public and to the board, the reason that we are looking at the sales tax is, we did a study with U of M, and we looked at the cost to residents and non-residents, and showing that when the sales tax within the county of Stearns is usually paid for by 55% non-residents and 45% residents, just due to our population, our commuters, and everything that goes in and out of our county. So getting really at the crux of what we're here to discuss today, if my mouse would work, okay. Ballot information and examples. So I have just two brief slides here. We did talk to some legal counsel on this, and one, a couple of things that they have recommended and talked to us about is, first of all, keep the question closely aligned to the legislative authorization received. So the verbiage that came from the state in our authorization to have sales tax is highlighted in yellow there, and I, there's, you know, dots within there, but a tax of 3.8 of 1% up to 325 million for construction of a new Stearns County Justice Center consisting of law enforcement center, judicial center, and jail. We do not need to specify the location of the facility, nor a more precise cost estimate. So if we thought it was going to come in at 287, we don't need to, we don't need to do that. We have authorization up to 325. The best practice we have been advised on is to avoid language that commits the county to future action if the question doesn't pass. So again, avoid leading your voter by statements such as a no vote will do this or do that, unless it's a true statement. And, but it is okay to say something regarding the services or facilities are mandated. Additional guidance here, this one here gets, I want to provide some clarification on. So we need to use, or they advise we use the word "construction of justice center", because that is what we were given the legal authority to implement the tax for, is construction of a justice center. The attorney believes that the language of the special law is broad enough with the word "construction" to permit the renovation and remodeling of the existing facilities as part of moving services away. Okay, so, for instance, one thing we talked about at one time was needing to have a Sally Port here, in case we kept some courts downtown. If you were to renovate or change the existing law enforcement center to have holding cells and to have a Sally Port, that could be covered by sales tax, that would need to be a permanent plan, not one that would be temporary to then tear down and build a Sally Port two years later with the same sales tax dollars out at a new facility. So I wanted to clarify that piece of that. And then the dollar amount of up to 325 million, it's best practice to put that in the ballot, but however, when we look at the county ballot questions, you'll see that some people do and don't put a dollar amount in there, because I think they believe it can be confusing that it's the amount of the project, or the amount of the tax, or such. So you'll see the two questions that we have before you today for consideration. One has a dollar amount in there, and one does not. So I did provide the Commissioners with, this is a two-slide thing up on the screen, just so it's a little easier visibly to see for people who are looking at the presentation, but I did provide, I think, six examples to the Commissioners of ones that have gone to voters from different jurisdictions, what the ballot question was, and what the election results were of those. So I'm not going to read through those unless-
Some is such, in the Carlton County example, because it did say that they, if a no vote was going to mean it was going to be financed through property tax, their board had decided their board had decided that that's how it was going to get paid for. And I think that one, right, they were constructing, they were in the process anyways.
I know what tax it was, I'm, I think Carlton maybe was
Right, because what I was hearing you say, and this is for the public because you've shared this with us previously, is that the frowning, from the legislature anyways, would be us putting both in unless we were committing ourselves to the county and the taxpayers to be at either or.
Right, yeah, if you say something like that, you are making a commitment.
Right.
And you're right, Madam Chair, is some of these projects were in process, so it actually was a true statement that
Right.
if they weren't going to pass the sales tax, they had none of the other choice.
They didn't have a choice, which in a way was kind of amazing on its own. So, okay, continue, thank you.
So I have two potential ballot questions that we have, we did run these past legal counsel and it's been a couple of months since we've done that. And we are definitely open to discussion and changes on things we could take back before legal counsel for consideration. But ballot question number one for discussion up here, the difference between the two is merely the dollar amount. I mean, it's, one has a dollar amount of the up to 325 million in there and one does not. So this one, I guess I'll just read them quick here for the public too, but shall Stearns County be authorized to impose a sales and use tax of three As of 1% for no more than 30 years or until the project and associated bonding costs are paid for, whichever comes first, for the purpose of financing the construction of a justice center facility consisting of law enforcement center, judicial center, and jail? These services and facilities are mandated by the state of Minnesota to be provided by counties. My mouse does not like me today. So the second one here is fairly similar. Shall Stearns County be authorized to impose a sales and use tax of three As of 1% to finance up to 325 million in construction of a justice center facility consisting of law enforcement center, judicial center, and jail? The sales tax would remain in effect for no more than 30 years or until the project and associated bonding costs are paid for, whichever comes first. And then the last sentence is the same, mandated services by the state of Minnesota.
So we can stop there if you'd like to have some discussion, or it's up to you.
So one thing, just to go back to, I was a little concerned when you were talking about the remodeling that it might get confusing compared to what we talked about last week. If we did that, then we would have to use levy dollars when we, when we built something new in the future. We only can use it, as you said, for permanent. So unless, you know, if, let's say for some, this is not where we decided to go, so it's probably a moot point, but if somebody had put on Facebook, oh, yeah, you could use two jails and two courts, like as in actually two full-blown things, and that is not anything any of us are looking at. So can you just, just to make sure that people understand?
Yeah, so maybe the easiest example is, you need to think of it as one project.
Right.
So you have authority to do a project here. You can't do, okay, let's remodel the courts downtown here, and then let's 10 years, let's build courts out at, at a green site. You can't do that, that's two swings.
Right. And the good news is we've decided not to do that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's just kind of an example. Other than that, it kind of gets a little gray and murky after, you know.
What is financed needs to be part of the final project is kind of how I look at it.
That makes sense, makes sense. I almost called you doctor. Well, getting another title to your list.
Thank you. Madam Chair, and Sarah, and Randy, you've referenced attorney and counsel several times. I assume the county attorney?
We have a bond counsel that we use.
Okay.
And then also PFAM is our fiscal consultant, so they do these things, they advise on those. So those are the primary, and certainly we've dealt with the county attorney's office also.
But Madam Chair, that makes me feel a little bit better because it's obviously a more state.
Yep.
You know, they probably have a little bit more in-depth
Yeah.
knowledge on
Right, they have.
Yeah, they've consulted and worked with various counties on these projects.
And Madam Chair, I think we should consider, I think, first of all, and I'll say this more times than everybody wants to hear, this is a tax. I mean, let's not forget, this is a tax. I was in, let's say, when school referendums, we passed that on the ballot, it has to say by voting yes, you're voting for a tax increase. Well, I'm not suggesting that at all. However, it's amazing and somewhat unfortunate how much of the public many times don't understand that if you vote, the people that voted yes for a referendum, the very next year was complaining to the county that their property taxes went up $300. I mean, they had no, there was a total disconnect. So we don't need to say that or anything, however, I will always remind myself, and hopefully everybody else, this is a tax, and so we got to be very geared in on that. I think the more
Can I ask you a question really quickly on that?
Absolutely.
Do you think it's sufficient then? I mean, I hear you say that you're not saying we should do that statement at the end, but it does say that they'd be voting to impose a sales and use tax twice in there.
Right.
Do you think that's
Oh, that's close enough, yeah, I don't think, but a school referendum, I mean, that is a direct, you know.
Absolutely.
And again, the reason, the reason the state did that is because, again, how many people, residents of a lot of school districts, were voting for referendums and then they complained about the tax increase? Well, one justified the other, so, but let's just be, and I know that many of us are very sensitive, this still is a tax, so we'll be respectful of that. One, two, I think we need to be as transparent. I like a lot of these examples and I like the two suggested, you know, for, I think we're being somewhat, I don't, I don't want to, I want to be as transparent as we can be, and like you said, I think, Sarah, don't, you know, not tie us into something. We're not saying what we're not going to do. We may do more, as Commissioner Notch said, if the bid's really coming low, we may add some things that we're not looking to add, but some things may not be added and we need to be flexible with that by the language, and I think we, we are. I think this does keep that. But like, I don't think it hurt, I don't think it would hurt, because I get asked this all the time, where is it going to be? It's not going to be downtown, from my perspective. You hear something different, but as long as we've made that decision, I don't think it would hurt to say that it's going to be in an open space or however we want to say that, only because, again, I think, what my, my concern is, and I shared this with Randy earlier, but let's face it, we talked a lot about this, and I don't know what percentage of people know this, know about this. I mean, I can't believe, in my mind, I would think everybody knows about it, but in reality, there's going to be people that are voting on this that will have seen this for the first time, I believe. And so we have to be sensitive to, in that one minute that we've got, when they're reading the question, that they understand that we've done our wherewithal in saying it's going to be in an open space, it's going to be this, it's going to be, you know, like, for example, remodeling, demolition, do we, because again, a lot of people don't understand that we will have to tear the jail down. And on the same token, if they, in my opinion, if they see that we've thought this through, that we're going to do it in an open space, we're going to demolish and remodel, those are all not negative things in my opinion, it kind of shows that we've thought this through. And again, I'm just throwing that out there as we're, as we're talking. But both of the, you know, the ballot questions that you suggest, I think, I don't think we should say the dollar amount because we may not do 325 million.
So I think we'll have more discussion on that, Mr. Schreifels.
Yeah, I would agree on the dollar amount because I think that can be misleading because we don't, we're doing a lot of efforts not to spend that amount. But the marketing, obviously, is so important. There's no way we can put everything in a ballot question that's important, right? So the marketing, obviously, is very important and, you know, getting that stuff out that you talked about, I think, is paramount, so.
Well, and a question I guess I had that was related and go to you two and to Lee is, there is also an art to how long this is, so how much information. At some point, if we don't include everything we're considering, and we do, that can be a problem too. And I don't know if you all have thoughts on, about including, whether it's in a green space or the fact we're moving it or not. I don't, I think I'm pretty neutral on that, I don't know that that's a bad thing, but hopefully. My, my question really is, is how long does this get? Because people will start shutting down. Because we're not like, thankfully, California or Arizona that have full-blown books with very long, very long things. So what's the best practice?
Well, I think these here have kind of the minimum you want in there. After that, it gets to be more of an art than a science, right?
Okay.
So, you know, you guys are pretty good on the public perception, so it doesn't, doesn't hurt. I think you can do that if you want to put a spot, but that's your call.
And it sounds like you're recommending number one then, because that's the main difference is whether we're putting the number of the cost.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hursky and then Commissioner Notch, and Commissioner Lenzmeyer, if you end up having something, please let us know.
No.
Randy, Sarah.
Keep going.
Okay, we will, thank you.
I like, the questions are both good, I'm just wondering about a hybrid. I don't like the idea of saying 325 million and saying that amount in that, then that handcuffs us or tells them that that's how much we are spending. But by the same token, providing information about that, could, could we do a hybrid and say of approximately? So then actually, if we draw 340 million and we have the need, if we are then extending the project, let's say we're going to add, do in addition to the jail within that, oh, what do I want to say? Within the 30 years, then that, then we can use those funds at that time.
I don't think we can go above 325.
Right, 325 is our maximum.
That's all we can collect because of what we were given.
The language of this, in the statute says 325 million maximum.
We have to stop whenever we hit 325.
I thought we got the three As for 30 years, there was a max amount.
It's, it's either the lesser of, right, hitting 325 or 30 years. So if we pay it off in 28 years, we're done.
Oh.
Or if we hit 325, we also are done.
Okay, see, you understand where I'm going with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that would have been good, but we can't go above that. Commissioner Notch, did you, I'm sorry, did you have a number?
No, I mean, because we had that with the sales tax on the, on the roads, we were drawing more money than we anticipated.
Right.
And so now we're allowed to use those extra dollars that we're drawing.
I would, you know, if everything stays the same with sales tax, how it's growing, most likely we won't be doing it for 30 years.
Okay.
But who knows, right?
So, okay.
Commissioner Notch, did you have something?
I would have just kind of commented on the second one, if that would have been the preferred one, to either highlight, you know, to finance up to in bold, or no more than 325, you know, so because you need to, again, people get lost in the, they look at like 325 million, oh, you know, they don't see that that's not, I mean, the goal is to be less than that, but yeah, you don't want the ballot question too big or too confusing that I'm just going to vote no because I don't totally understand, so I think these two are pretty clear-cut. I would just say if that goes with the 325, highlight maybe up to or whatever, no more than, you know, so they realize it's, the end is
How do you feel about the recommendation to not include?
I'm okay with either one.
Okay.
Because I think if, if we can get this finished now, so we can get that outreach and get out there and do the communication, you know, I think everybody will understand we're trying to keep it below that, 325.
You can continue on if you like.
Yes, please do, thank you.
Next slide, we've talked about, but if you were, if the answer was no from the constituents, it would be a $17.5 million to build a facility, which would be almost a 19% increase in your levy. And then there's various financing options there, but most likely a CIP, that would be a four-fifth vote of the board required. For the property tax implementations, on the left side, you'll see the table of what that levy would do to people's property taxes. And we highlighted under residential homestead, the 262,000 as an average house. Now, listening to the news, I think that's, that's low, but anyway, that's what the assessors gave us. So that would be a tax of $187,000, $187 a year added to that. And the sales tax, remember, per resident according to the study was $34. And looking at the average household of two and a half people, the sales tax would be $85 a household, and then the property tax would be 187, so that's kind of the comparison. So it is a better deal for the property tax owners to have a sales tax because a lot of it's being paid by people coming into the county for business and whatever. So, Sarah, we did look at apartments also, so this gets a little bit more confusing. We try to look at apartments across the county, and this does not include any elderly apartments or student housing. But again, the sales tax per residence is the $34. The property tax per apartment unit on that bottom right table is $72, and then per bedroom would be just over $40, so.
And if I recall correctly, you did, well, if somebody is living on campus, they would not have this, is that correct? But the other apartments that are, for example, near St. Cloud State?
Yeah.
They would, so for, for those, those students, the many students who do not live on campus, since most don't.
Yep.
They would be paying
Right.
less under, under this.
Correct.
At least based on the runs you, you all very graciously ran.
Yep.
I appreciate that, okay.
And then the last page is the summary that, you know, it is projected that that tax will pay for the entire project, all the different options we've looked at, up to 325,000. And then the households would pay $85, the property tax versus, and then, let's see, what the sales tax would pay, probably $85 per household for the sales tax and $187 for property tax. And then the ballot question needs to be submitted to the board in July, so that would be coming back at the next meeting.
So this might be a good time to remind the public that right now we have the authority to go up to a half-cent sales tax for our roads and bridges. We impose a quarter cent instead of a half, so for those who might be concerned that voting for this would make our sales tax significantly more than, particularly using Benton and Sherburne, it wouldn't because they both do a half-cent sales tax. So it'll be a little bit more on the Stearns County side, at least for the city of St. Cloud, but it will not be much different. And that, that would be same with, with Sauk Rapids, so for example. So based on what your recommendation is, and knowing that you're going to bring a question back, it sounds like we don't have anybody who would feel strongly about having the up to amount.
We'll probably bring them both back and then you can decide at that point.
Okay, okay, great.
Madam Chair, just a suggestion, Randy, is that why, is, I mean, if we kind of agree that we don't want the 325 in there, only because then we can zero it in on making the one question that we might kind of agree on, I, I would recommend we do not act on this today because that'll give the public some time to, you know, interact with us if they have opinions, but if we would just kind of try to gear it towards one single question that we could tweak a little bit if we needed to, and between now and the next meeting, we should share with your team,
Mike or myself.
Mike and you what that is, I'm not sure, but I'm just wondering, rather than, because when we, if we're in agreement that it's not, 325 doesn't need to be in there, it just maybe confuses issue, we can zero it in a little bit more. Now, whether or not we do demolition, remodeling, all that kind of stuff, that can be fluid yet, and we can think and think that through, I'm not, I'm not sure, but, I mean, I personally prefer the first one. With potentially the, the open space or whatever you want to call it, green space, people aren't getting green space.
No, and I'm not sure, I'm not
And I don't know.
I guess I'd question how, I, I want to think about all of that a little bit, Mark, Commissioner Notch, because I'm concerned about putting too much in there and it becoming more problematic than helpful. I have to say, when I first looked at it, I actually thought it was useful to have the up to 325 million. And reflection though, I get that because it might make people think for sure that's the number as opposed to whatever the number will end up being, so I'm personally fine with it. But I wondered the same thing too, if we don't have anybody who strongly wants to have the number in there, then shouldn't we have you just go focus on question, question number one or tweaking number one perhaps?
Madam Chair, I don't, like you had alluded to, I think the 325 at least appears to have some transparency also to the public about what kind of number we are talking about. When they, if they see it for their first time, 30 years, three As, for some people that could be $10 million, for some people that it could be, you know, $100 million or even a billion dollars, they have no idea. So if we come back with both questions, I'm fine, and then we just decide that then, and that way
Is that what, is that your preference is what you're saying?
Instead of setting the question today, let's, let's come back and give a chance.
And maybe an example of having one that says open space or something like that in there?
As long as it's short. I do, I get, do get concerned even though, I mean, I, we can't do this. It'd be great if we could have an informational piece that was at polling places, but then we're influencing people, so we cannot do that, because for, going back to, for the people who haven't looked at this at all, a concern I ultimately came to in terms of transparency is the question, if we have the number in there, the up to, it doesn't end up telling anybody that they will only spend 45 cents on the dollar of that amount. They might walk away thinking that they are going to be, I mean, it's, it's the reaction we've all had, I mean, we, we've the reaction we've all had. I mean, we, we've now had several years to kind of live with the sticker shock of this, knowing its mandated services, et cetera. So maybe you can help us with that. It sounds like it wouldn't take you a whole lot more to bring back both. And I think if you're interested in that, we could do that.
What I'm, what I'm going to do, Madam Chair, is I'm going to give this to people, preferably that don't know what we're talking about. I'm going to try to find them and see what does this tell you? What does this mean to you when they read that ballot question? Because I would say, unfortunately, and I'm an optimist, I'd say 50% of the people don't have a clue.
Right. Well, we haven't started our public campaign, really, so hopefully, we will get there. And it's going to be really challenging to, to get to all of the adults, which I think is part of, part of your point. So keep thinking about, maybe we're able next time, to, to talk a little bit more about public outreach efforts and what we can be doing with all of that, because I think that's been a concern we've all had. I know you all have had that. Okay. Well, thank you.
Madam Chair, just one other thing. You know, if we were wondering about the word green space, could we just somehow say site, construction or site, or new location, or something like that, so it just doesn't say green space?
Yeah, then downtown.
Yeah.
And I think we don't want to even get into the other, if it says new location, that probably, and St., but then you have to say in St. Cloud, too. So at some point, you just got to figure out how you want to say it.
We'll play with.
Just kind of think about what the least words we can use are that somebody will understand. Okay.
Or building site and construction.
Sure.
As tempted, as tempting, as tempting as it is to include what each of us individually consider pertinent information, if you make this thing too long, people won't read it. And they'll look, yeah, they'll see, see it on the ballot, go to the bottom, check the no box, and move on. There is no perfect way to convey this idea to someone who hasn't done any background on this whatsoever. So we'll take our best shot at this and put it out there. And we're all government types, okay, and our tendency, tendency, nothing. Our mode of operation is to include more detail than folks are typically willing to put up with, even though we're, in our minds, we're doing our job. So whatever, I just want to see us keep this brief, but somehow convey the idea we want to accomplish and acknowledging on the front end that that's impossible, do the best we can.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, wise words. I, I, I share your, share your sentiment. I think we, we each have things that we'd like to see, perhaps, like what else can we give them? I, it actually made me think, too, though, can you briefly just, and then we'll go ahead and move on to issues by commissioners. But can you just tell us a little bit about ballot placement? Where will this be?
Most likely on the back page, after, you know, a lot of the other stuff, typically is where the questions go.
So will it be after anybody who's up for office?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the other thing, just for us to remember, for many people, they're not going to get to this. That's going to be part of our wanting to make sure that people.
Yeah.
Know and understand if they want to weigh in, they are going to want to vote on it.
There's a school referendum. Is it before or after that? And will it be one?
I think it'd be for schools, right, counties.
And same before cities?
Yeah. And before cities.
Okay. That's actually helpful.
And are there going to be some, or don't you know yet?
Oh, I know St. Cloud has some. I believe 742 have one, maybe only in the primary.
I think 742 is waiting. At least, that's what they had told me a few months ago. I don't know if they're changing, the city of St. Cloud is.
Yeah, maybe St. Joe also.
Yeah, well, as you, it sounds like then ours would be after all of the people.
Yep.
Who are up for office, but before any other.
Yeah. I can look into it.
Questions. Okay, if you could let us know as you're hearing, too, that would be great. Great. Well, thank you. Please thank the broader team, too. And we're going to go ahead and move to issues by commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, do you have any items today?
Nope. I think we made an important, well, maybe the significant decision of the year last Friday. We got to kick this thing in the tail and move it, and move it down the line, even though there are only about 2 million other things I'd rather talk about, but that's, goes with the job.
Agreed. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Commissioner Bertram?
Nothing.
Commissioner Persky?
I have a couple of things. First of all, John talking about the frustrations at the park, hopefully, we can, you know, at least put them in the right direction. They've suffered a considerable number of issues out there.
Yeah.
And got some pending things with the Attorney General. So if we can somehow support them, it's out of our domain, but, but yet, yet within the scope of helping those folks out.
So just really quickly, it sounds like there might be a couple things that are, especially with the sale and licensing, so.
Absolutely. And we've had corporations coming from out of state, using, you know, their regulations, imposing things that, you know, they want, and they, they are not necessarily paying attention to our concerns in Stearns County, nor what the state of Minnesota is saying. So.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and some just basic conditions that they have in the park need to, need perhaps improve out there. Likewise, we had an earlier question and, too, about immigration at the, at the airport. Well, I don't think Sherburne, our airport deals with immigration at all. I mean, people have the right to travel freely if they've got documentation to, to get on a plane, so I don't see that as any part of, part of our issue. And then one last thing is, residents that are in, outside of St. Joe have had some more concerns about operations at Milk and Honey regarding the parking, the music, the number of people, and days that they've been operating. So hopefully, we'll get a follow-up on some of those issues that are out there. But I've had several calls and several emails, so.
Thanks. Thanks, Joe. Mr. Natch?
Yeah, and I don't know if Commissioner Bertram can maybe speak to this. The History Museum is doing their 40th anniversary. Is that next week? I forget.
Got from Saturday.
Letter in the mail.
We, it's part of the consent agenda this morning. I was going to ask to have that polled, but I thought, how much do you want to poll? But we did do a proclamation, which I shared with the museum board, and I'll read it. But they, they asked me to say a few words, so I certainly, I don't know if you have, do you have an official? Like, do you give them something?
Oh, we could, we can do that, sure.
If you want to get me something, because Mayor Kleiss and I are going to be saying a few words, or we could, I could share that. It's going to be on the 29th, from 1 to 3, with, which is the, their 40th anniversary. And it is really remarkable, having, being the ex-official member from the board on board. I knew a lot about it, but I've learned a lot more about it. But, you know, I think it was Winston Churchill that always said, the further forward you want to go, the further backwards you have to look. I mean, there is a lot of history in all of our communities and in the county, and we really are, we're great at helping them do that, to allow them to do that. But, yeah, that is the 29th, from 1 to 3 at the museum.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I forgot to bring the postcards.
I think the.
So if you can get me a proclamation, Mike.
Bet.
The more, the more we can let people know about those kind of events, it's great to have things to celebrate.
And then I think Thursday night, that Town Hall, is that open to the public? I don't know if it is. It's, it's at all, in Albany, at Senior Center at 7 o'clock.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner, I, I just had an email this morning asking to forward it to you. It's the first I heard of it. I don't really know much about it.
I think we've all been notified, I think we all were notified.
Okay.
You might want to post that, just in case. Or do you have to? I don't know.
I don't think we have to. It's going to somebody else's meeting.
Yeah. And then the last thing is, oh, go ahead. Well, I'd just say, as far as being open to public, I assume it is, but it's not our event, so I.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And, and the last thing was, we're going to get a notice for sign up for the county fair coming up at the end of, well, last day of July, first part of August. So.
I always think it's nice that our county fair is on my birthday, so it's very, very nice.
You can see on that sign up sheet that we've got numerous people, and, and a lot of people, I don't think my name's on there, but I'm going to be there a lot. And we're also, we'll be able to, we're going to, those employees that are, that are going to be there, we're going to provide them with like food voucher, beverage, lots to make, they can get a burger or something. And we'll also be, we'll be getting their parking, so they don't have to pay for their own parking, too. So trying to create a little bit more, easier for employees to be there, and a little more fun.
Well, let's think about how we're going to communicate in some future meetings, too, or how we're communicating to the public about all of those things, because they are, they are good. Anything else, Commissioner Natch?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay.
Are we going to see the list, the folks that are signed up for that?
Well, we can, but.
Yeah, I think Steve's mentioned one of them, that they're going to, that we'll get an email.
But I mean, I'd like to know the directors, because you've directed directors.
It's on the sheet, and you'll see it.
Because last year, my goal, as the first time I was there, was that we have more than six people there, like we did last year.
Well, and it was right after, I mean, the pandemic, we used to have lots, lots of people.
They're on the list already.
Yep. No, that's good. And certainly encourage everybody to go. Well, knowing that we'd love to go ahead and be together, and we could stretch out this, this even, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting, and we can keep talking afterwards if anybody wants to. The meeting is adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.